2015 reorganizational meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors. First item is having a forum tonight, all seven board members. Mr. Reese, if you can lead us in prayer, we appreciate it.
God our Father, we bow before you, Lord, tonight with thanks-giving for this great country which you have given us to live in. We pray your blessings on the United States of America. Your blessing, Lord, we pray upon the commonwealth of Virginia and upon With County and the town of Withfull here. And, Lord, for those who lead and govern over us, may your blessing be upon each and every one. Lord, have way with us in our hearts and in our lives. Pour out your grace upon this county and the people of With County. Father, we ask your blessing upon those, again, here tonight who lead. We pray that your will would be done. We pray for the guidance of the Holy Spirit, God, in all things. May you be glorified in our thoughts, in our words, in our deeds. Lord, have right of way and bring honor and glory unto yourself, we pray. And then we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Reese, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item of business tonight is the election of a chair for calendar year 2015. I'd open up the floor for nominations for chair of the With County Board of Supervisors for the upcoming year.
Mr. Dalton, I'd like to nominate supervisor-at-large, Tim Reeves.
Mr. Reeves has been nominated by Mr. Hall. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Wilson's seconded. Any other nominations? If not, I'd accept a motion to close the nominations.
So move.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
The nominations have been closed. All those that are in favor of Mr. Reeves being elected chair for 2015, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Housman?
Aye.
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 I abstain.
Six oh. Congratulations, Mr. Reeves. I will give you all the information here that I have gathered. Next one, the election of the vice-chair. Congratulations.
Okay. We'll go on and move into our agenda. I'll open the floor up for nominations for vice-chair.
Mr. Reeves, I'd like to nominate Mr. Hall for vice-chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have any more nominations for vice-chairman? Do I have a motion for nominations to be closed?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? The motion's second. Nominations are closed. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Aye.
On the chair, both sides. Okay. Next on the agenda is the naming of a pro-tem. Like name supervisor held at Fort Chisal district as pro-tem for 2015. Okay. Moving on with the agenda, since we've got the reorganization done, we'll move into the public hearing, which is scheduled for 7:05. With County, well, the county of With has applied for funding from the Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund to provide sewer services to I-77 exit 24 area. The project includes the construction of a 20,000 gallon per day wastewater treatment facility. The loan request is for $2,103,000. A preliminary engineering report and environmental assessment report for the project are on file at the With County Engineering Department, 340 South Sixth Street in Withfull, Virginia, and are available for public viewing, public review between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The public hearing is for the purpose of receiving comments on the project. The alternative considered there, environmental impact, an estimated cost, and associated users' charge impact will be held at 7:05 p.m., January the 13th, 2015, by the Board of Supervisors in the boardroom of the county administration building at 340 South Sixth Street, Withfull, Virginia. Any written comments should be addressed to R. Salale Dalton, County Administrator, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfull, Virginia, 24382, and postmarked no later than January the 13th, 2015. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hall, which will be keeping the time and calling the individual names. Well, three minutes for individuals, five minutes for groups, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hall.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hall, if you could indulge me, it'd probably be proper if we allow county engineer to give a brief presentation of this project prior to taking comments for the record.
That'd be fine. Mr. Vaughn?
I've asked you to put some slides up on thumb drive. We can go through it, and then everybody out there can see what I'm speaking to. It might be a little clearer for everybody.
The preliminary engineering report has a background. In 1995, With County performed a water and sewer study, which was prepared by Anderson and Associates. And the recommendation was that wastewater service be provided to the popper camp Foster Falls area of the county sometime between the period of 2005 and 2010. Well, we are past that now, but the application and the suggestions still apply. 2013, the PER was prepared by Pete and Boards of Christiansburg. Next slide, please. The project considerations were this: There was a centralized system which would serve existing residents and businesses in that location. It would eliminate septic systems that are there right now. There's watershed protection for Short's Creek, which is listed by the state as an impaired waterway. It would eliminate potential for onsite package treatment systems, which, of course, contribute to groundwater pollution and eventual contamination of Short's Creek and the new river there down. It enhances potential growth in that area, especially with the water system that's in there now and being expanded currently, and is consistent with the county's long-range plans. Next slide, please. There were five alternatives considered in the PER, which were also addressed in the EA, environmental assessment. Of course, one's always a no-action criteria. That's a requirement. Exit 24 service area alone, extended gravity sewer area, extension of US-52, and then down to the shot tower area. Next slide, please. Of course, alternative one, no action, simply means there'd be no improvements. Folks would still continue to use septic systems, no more protection or enhanced protection for Short's Creek. Any deficiencies that exist now would not be addressed, and any present and future needs, of course, would not be met. Next slide, please. Alternative two, which did turn out to be the alternative of choice, addresses the exit 24 area. Wastewater service would be provided in the immediate area. The project would include a gravity collection system, which would go to a pump station, which would then go to a wastewater treatment facility just a short ways across the creek, we think, that'll be sited and right off of Castleton Road. It has several advantages. It will serve the majority of the residences in the commercial sites that are already in that location. Completely eliminates the need for any future package treatment systems. I believe there's one private, when not commercial, there right now. There's a little store residence that backs up to Short's Creek. If they're permitted by the Commonwealth for package systems, about 1,000 gallons per day. Expandable service area, as you'll see in the existing two, four, and five alternatives, removes development barriers. A large business industry could come in there, set up something, and wouldn't have to be hampered by having to put in a package plant or not, depending on how the Commonwealth would allow it, permit it. And, of course, it is consistent with goals and objectives of With County. Next slide, please. Alternative three is the extended gravity area. That would extend some service further up Castleton Road and up Lead Mines Road, which topographically would just allow for nature, gravity being quote "free," to drain into the basic collection system to where the pump station would be to go to the actual treatment system. It would develop some of those areas additionally, undeveloped property along Lead Mines Road. It would require an additional pump station. It would not require one, excuse me, and it would be added to the alternative two system. Next slide, please. Alternative four is extending up US-52, which could eventually service Jackson Memorial School, which, as you know, with the project that started this on the 5th, is getting public water. So they would have all public utilities if this was eventually built that far. However, there would be a pump station required in that area because of topography to get it back to the treatment system. Has advantages: Possible gravity lines from the north of I-77 could expand to future development. That, of course, would require a bore and casing procedure, but not impossible to do. So all that open land on the other side of 77 could eventually be opened in that case as long as casing and the bore could be done, put the sewer line under the interstate. And it eliminates the current onsite system at the elementary school, which is always a threat. Next slide, please. And alternative five is the shot tower area. It would require a pump station and a force main in that area near the shot tower. Of course, the main disadvantage of that is there's only one small public restroom there basically right now, which the expense for that much sewer line to service one restroom is prohibitive. And it is advantage, though, it is consistent with DCR goals of connecting state park facilities to public sewer. So there's a give and take in that case. Next slide, please. And the conclusions are that exit 24 would, A, implement the goals of providing a centralized wastewater service to the exit 24 area, provide long-term benefits to the area and the environment, complement the county water service in the area, which is now being installed all the way up Jackson Elementary and out Castleton Road to Barron Springs. Enhance commercial, industrial, and residential development in that area. Combination of the alternatives were put together. And it supports expected growth, and it will eliminate the negative impacts on Short's Creek. Next slide, please. The environmental assessment in conjunction with the PER determined that alternative two at this time was the alternative of choice economically and because of the benefits and disadvantages. It provides the necessary infrastructure to meet the goals and objectives, and it is expandable at some point in time. Next slide, please. Just for information, at this point, because we're here on the public comment about the EA and the PER, the project has been funded, or can be funded, will be funded when the loan closes, by the Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund Program. $2.103 million project at this time, initial estimates. The loan agreement was forwarded to With County on 29th September last year, and the county accepted the loan agreement on December 15th. So we've postured ourselves for the project. The terms, of course, the loan amount and a 0.2% administrative and management fee is asked by the Commonwealth. Next slide, please. This is just a quick rundown to show you what's involved in getting one of these projects going. PER in July of '13, environmental report was published in it in July of '13 also. January of last year, we had to do a request for proposal for engineer design services. We did that. VPDS, that's a pollutant discharge elimination system permit Commonwealth requires, we had to put in for that, and we've had our public comment period on that. We have a right-of-entry agreement that we have retained for the site for the proposed wastewater plant. Just last, two weeks ago, we had a firm go in there and take soil borings to continue the assessment of that site, so that's ongoing. All our 30-day notices for all the permits that we applied for, the discharge permit and dislodge permit, have passed. They were published in the enterprise, and I do believe I heard Mr. Gordon reading some of those on the radio occasionally. So folks should be aware, the 30-day assessment period, that addresses what we're doing tonight, ended on the 6th, and is the 13th, therefore, we are having our public hearing. Next slide, please. If all things go well with the Commonwealth, here's the schedule for when we think the project will continue. With our engineering services contract, we'll be getting our design in the next 120 days. Should have a final design somewhere around the end of August. Then we'll get authority to advertise and bid. Right now, we're doing it in two pieces, because there's a wastewater plant and then there's a collection system. And, as you know, sometimes the guy that puts in the pipe isn't necessarily the right guy to do the plant and vice versa. So we're gonna bid it in two places so we can get the best possible job. Bid openings and award a notice maybe the end of November if things go well, same time closing the loan. Then we'll go to construction, and all things being equal, sometime around September of 2016, a fully functioning system. Any questions, gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you.
Okay, well, look, some citizens have signed for Citizens Time. They put a subject. If you didn't put a subject, I'll ask if you want to speak specifically to this project. If you put a subject other than this, we'll hear your comments during Citizens Time. So Tommy Duncan?
It's not concerning the water system, but I will say that I went to Jackson Bowl High School from 1952 to 1956. Our everything we done was outside, including the dirt and basketball court with wooden backboards, and the water was not fit to drink or wash our uniforms in it.
We'll leave you on the agenda for Citizens Time, too. Let's see, Ms. Meyer?
I'm curious, what is the percentage of monetary implications for the taxpayers of With County? Over and above this $2 million grant?
It's a user fund in project. There's no impact to the taxpayer, except for the use.
There's no impact at all to the taxpayer of the county. Okay. And the administrative fee, that is all included? Did I get that straight?
0.2%.
0.2%. Okay. And with the state aid reduction, does that affect it at all?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. And Bob Milton did sign up to speak to this project.
I will speak in favor of the sewer system in exit 24. We've got, may I pardon, we have a commercial in that area.
Could you come up to the microphone?
Art Davis and myself, we own property, commercial good commercial property, right there at the exit, and I think we've been hampered on getting things in there because of not having sewer. We've had people look at it, but the sewer system's been a problem, and I think it's a great thing to promote the popper camp and that end of the Fort Chisal district. I speak highly in favor of the sewer system down there.
Thank you. Thank you. Everybody else is Citizens Time.
Okay. Do you have anybody else who would like to speak in the public hearing? Yes, sir. Please take your name and your address, please.
Hello. My name's Philip Storms, and I live at 1661 Austenville Road. And I have a question for the engineer. Isn't it possi-- is, I suppose there's no way to possibly feed the treatment plant by gravity only? Because stuff flows downhill, you know?
The topography in that area when you get to the creek, it has the main collection point, Zion Roads, and you get across creek, back up Little Ways, to the black thirty, the gravel, gravel area, gravel pit, and to do some pumping, but not a lot. And the alternative is also, depending on how it changes, that one country, also requires some pumping in the topography. So it's very hard to reflect most of the sewage by gravity, but it comes to a point where you've got to kind of put it over and build it.
Okay. That is a weak point, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else would like to speak on the public hearing for sewer plant? Here none, I'll close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is Citizens Time. Linda Myers, you signed up for?
Yeah. Well, one is four, so it's three. I was wondering if the Speedway property had been taken off the auction block? Jean had asked about that. It has been.
Excuse me?
The Speedway property, has that been taken, the vacant land across from the transfer station? Is it off the auction block?
No, ma'am.
It isn't? You're gonna continue with that? You're going--
Yes.
Okay. All right. Also, I was curious about, you're looking for a new administrator. The current salary of, sorry, Mr. Dalton, you're here, is significantly more than the surrounding counties, and we expect you to keep that in mind when you're doing your search, so we don't want you to give away the form. So if you'd make sure you look at surrounding remuneration for that position and be accordingly. Also, since the first of the year, I've been talking to a lot of people, and there's an acute interest in, let's say, a state of the county. And if we could have something either on the website and/or in the newspaper that would give the citizens in very short terms, the current bond rating, where we stand, the total amount of the indebtedness of the county, the total cost of government for 2014. People don't go and look at the budget. They don't, as you know, come here to meetings and so on. It would be very helpful. People are interested. The total number of employees, county employees and school employees, how many Progress Park inquiries last year, and how many showings for 2014. They'd also like to know the number of graduates and how many went on to college and tech school from With County. How many new businesses in 2014? The number of volunteer hours for the fire department and EMS in the county. They deserve a round of applause. They put in a lot of hours, and the general public would like to know this information. And forthcoming changes and the biggest challenge, perhaps, for 2015? And what are your, are the Board of Supervisors' efficiency plans for government for 2015? Here, they've written them down. We'd like to see these addressed in the newspaper and on your website for public information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Next person, Mr. Art Davis.
I lease Progress Park. I'm starting on my 16th year down there for farming purposes, so I wanted to kind of give an update on improvements I've done this year and some of the future improvements that are needed. And as you can see on this sheet, I've had to build my third corral at the park because of where it's chopped up to be able to catch the cattle where they're in different places now. I've had the fence into the new site. All those fences were torn out when they built those roads. And I had Gatorade come to me this summer. I had an electric fence around their site and part of the county site behind their building and where we put the new site in and the roads in. It was kind of getting out of hand, and they asked me if I'd take that back over again. So we just did a fencing project there, working with Salale, because part of it is on the county's land, and fenced in the west side of the rail, new rail bed going into the big site, and the east side of the road going into the big site, and then fenced behind Gatorade with a new five-strand barbed wire fence. It was like about a $9,000 improvement. And one of the biggest issues at the park, if any of you have been down there, is autumn olive. I don't know if you know what that is, but that's all the shrubbery down there that's growing wild. And I've been fighting that pretty hard. I've got on here the spike pellets that kills, it kills autumn olive, multiflora rose, and other invasive woody species. But when I started buying this, for a 25-pound bag of pellets, it was $200, and now it's $330. I put five bags out this summer. Basically sprinkled it around, it infiltrates into the roots and kills the plants. And actually, working with Salale, I did both sides of the road going into, from Pepper's Ferry to Somic. And you can't tell they're dead yet. This spring, we'll be able to see if they're dead. But it could take two treatments, but I can see, there's a couple little cedar trees on the bank out there, and I can see they're dying because they're green. So I think that will be part of the solution down there. And then the other solution, that's actually a lot cheaper, is Tordon, which with Tordon, you've got to cut the plant, and then you brush this on the stump. So we've been doing that. And so the reason I kind of came here tonight, the Gatorade lease that they gave me, they basically just gave me the land, but the lease is year-to-year. And I've got four different leases with different companies down there where they let me graze their land behind their buildings and so. So what I'd like to ask the county to do, the board to do, is to give me just a year-to-year lease. Right now, it's always been a term lease. Because about everything down there, I've had to do, you know? The county's helped me and supported me, Salale and his staff, and the board. I think the original board has all changed now, but they've always helped me and supported me, and I'm retired, so I put a lot of time in down there cleaning the place up. And so I'd like to ask the county to do that. You can see the future improvements that are needed. I've done two line fences with the neighbors down there where they pay half, or they put it in, I buy the materials, but there's more line fences that are in bad repair down there. The electric fence that I've been using, it's hard to keep it up because there's so many deer, and also all the vegetation gets up in it, so I've been trying to replace electric fences with five-strand barbed wire fence. So that's basically what I was here for tonight. And then there's, there's three companies down there, Gatorade, Amcor, and Lane, that they basically don't have an autumn olive problem. Gatorade has one behind where I'm gonna graze, and I'll be bush hogging and killing those. But there's three companies, Somic, Assumi, and then Coalfield Services, where they've got a real big, I don't know if you've been around their buildings, but their buildings are covered, around behind on the banks are covered with autumn olive. So I don't know if there's any way where the county can work with them. I'll spread the pellets if they'll buy them, or if there's any way I can work with them. And then I've also talked with Salale about maybe seeing if the inmates could help us. Maybe I could use a chainsaw and cut the autumn olives, and they could pile them, I'll burn them, and they can treat the stumps with the Tordon that I purchased. But that's kind of where I was kind of coming from tonight on this. And I appreciate the support that this board has always given me down there. I take a lot of pride in trying to keep the park looking good. I've been painting gates and doing things like that. But all the infrastructure that I put in down there belongs to the county. You know, that's how the contract's written up. But that's all I have. I was just trying to get that taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Salale, can we send that to the building and grounds committee for--
How about the economic development, since it deals with Progress Park? Have Mr. Davis-- Art, we meet the first Thursday of each month at 8 o'clock, if you'll show up in February at 8 o'clock?
Okay. I'll make another thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I can't read her.
Tommy Duncan.
I'm sorry I failed to finish. I'm filling that form out. My name is Tommy Duncan. I'm a retired railroad man and own a small farm and live in the greater Grayson Hill section of the Lead Mines District of With County. And we're quite proud of the Lead Mines District and the history it has there. And I appreciate what the supervisors have done. We have a good water system, excellent water, and we have a good trash system. That's good. And I appreciate what y'all have done for that area. But I had occasion last week to visit the new Lead Mines Rescue Squad building. I might add the new and greater and more efficient Lead Mines Rescue Squad. And I appreciate your staying that y'all took with that. It was needed. But as I looked at the building and the facilities, I realized I don't believe that's what Mr. Eddie Hagia had in mind. Eddie Hager had in mind when he dreamed this up, or proposed it. I looked, and there's no, there's no share, no share there for these people. And they come in with blood all over them, and they have to go home with it on their clothes. And I think that we need to look, I know it's budget time, I know budget's tight, but we need to look at improving, finish, finish that project down there, or certainly improve it. And probably, probably a washing dryer for, to clean the clothes. And I was down there Saturday, and those people run 10 runs out there Saturday, that's how many trips they made out there Saturday. And I appreciate any, any, any effort or any, anything y'all could do to improve that situation. It's, it's a good rescue squad, it's coming on, it's coming on. It needed, it needed to be, need to be doing what y'all done, it needed. And probably could get some donations on some of it, on some of it. And I also realize that I've served on the school board, I've served on the planning commission, and I basically know that the jobs y'all have are time-consuming, low-paying, thankless jobs. I understand that, I've been in some of it, you know. And I appreciate your time, that you, and listened to me, and if I can do anything to help you in this project, I live right down on top of Grayson Hill, and I'd be glad to assist you any way I could.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. And Mr. Ballen, the county engineer, is working on the share, share problem.
And I think, Mr. Dalton, did you have an update?
Well, I was just going to tell you, Mr. Ballen's pretty covered up, but the intention, Tommy, is that we come up with a plan with an alternance septic drain field back there that's acceptable to the health department and put everything that you just talked about in. So, that's in the works. It just takes a day or two to get it done.
Well, what kind of timeframe are you talking about? You know, or?
I hate to put our guy on the spot, but as soon as he can get it done, how about that?
I'm 75 years old, and you know, I got, I got a...
You're four years younger than me.
But I could prob, I'm working with Ferguson, I could probably get some things donated inside. They've been very cooperative, and the Whiz Stone donated a load of stone that's dumped on the parking lot down there now. They very kind of donated, and any shop they donate to Hollyville. But you know, if you just let the word out, you know, you could, might get some help on some of this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Life's not lazy, Kelsey Grimes, the 4-H.
Sure.
Okay. Hello, I am the 4-H agent for With County, and I am here for a request for With County to be the fiscal agent for With County 4-H when applying for grant and fund, grants and funding in the future. And in particular, I'm actually looking at applying for the With Land Foundation, yeah, February 1st. And I know what you must think, why do I need a fiscal agent? Because 4-H is a nonprofit. We're a nonprofit through Virginia Tech's umbrella, which means that we have to use Virginia Tech's tax exempt ID number when applying for any grants. So, therefore, we have to use Virginia 4-H Foundation. The problem is, the 4-H Foundation actually requires a 7% indirect cost from any monies that have been placed into the foundation itself. And that becomes a big problem when applying for grants, especially with ones like With Land, and actually the majority of ones I've actually looked at. So, that's why I'm coming to the board, to see if I can have the county actually act as the fiscal agent. And what I'm applying for is, there are all needs for programming, and I would really like to start expanding the program. We have a great program right now, we're in all the six elementary schools, two of the middle schools, and we have multiple different community clubs. We actually did receive monies last year in February, actually, well, from the February grant cycle from With Land for, for a cooking club that we had this summer that has expanded and grown into something that's monthly. And for that, I actually used the Southwest Virginia 4-H Center as the fiscal agent, but I feel like it would make a lot more sense if we actually just use the county that we're housed in. And all the programs are just for county children, it's just for With County youth. So, what I'm looking for doing is actually to have a greenhouse. We're going to be relocated, and I feel like a greenhouse would be a great opportunity to start expanding the program, having more horticulture. And instead of, when I want to do a horticulture program, actually having to find partners that I can borrow land and then find people who can either grow or donate the plants, this would be a great opportunity for us. The other ones that I'm thinking about is actually focusing a little bit more on the in-school enrichment, plus having, plus having some more camps in the summer, and that would be the mammalogy section that you see. I would like to purchase a lot of different animal skins, animal pelts, and replica skulls. My background is in wildlife biology, and I would really like to start adding that more into the school system. It's a big Virginia SOL, especially in the middle school, to know, to know basically taxonomy, how different, how different animals are classified and related, as well as just the Virginia native species themselves. And then what else you see, those are lego robotics kits. Lego robotics is very big. The STEM movement right now is very, very popular. Science, technology, engineering, and math, that's all we hear about. And right now, I have a homeschool club, actually, that would like to get involved, as well as some public schools that would like to start using the robotic kits. And then the last item on the list is actually for Trout in the Classroom. I know that Speedway with Mr. Rouse, they actually have a Trout in the Classroom program, and now two of the other elementary schools would like to have one. And so, you go through Trout Unlimited, and these kits that I've put on, yes, they are expensive, but they're ones that can be used for multiple years. They don't have to be replaced like a lot of the other ones do, or pieces of them replaced yearly. And so, those are some of the programs that I'm starting to really think that would be good for the county and would meet our county needs, especially based on our situational analysis that we did this time last year. But I really hope that you can consider letting these with County as a fiscal agent. Really appreciate it. And do you all have any questions so far?
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay. Well, thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions later on, please feel free to let me know, and I have a written request check.
Thank you. Mr. Dalton, is any legal or any thing that would prohibit us from being fiscal agent from the 4-H?
I want to make a couple telephone calls first.
And I'll tell you why I, why I thought of this, actually, it was just in December, and I was at the With Land meeting where they were showing the new changes, and I saw that Land County 4-H had received money in August, and I looked to see who they used, and they used, actually, they used the county. So, that's what gave me the idea.
Okay. But if we do it by the next board meeting, you'll have time to get the grant in. Okay. Thank you. That's everybody that's signed up for citizens' time. Does anyone else would like to make any comments? Here and none, I'll close citizens' time. Move on with our agenda. Minutes of the previous meeting, December 23rd, 2014, I have a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any corrections or changes that need to be made to the minutes? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. I entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
Mr. Chairman, will I make a motion?
Have a motion to pay the invoices. Do I have a second? A second. Have a motion, a second, pay the invoice, is any board member would like to discuss any invoice? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes to pay the invoices. All business. Okay, gentlemen, we have, first thing on our business is rules of procedure for 2015. I entertain a motion to adopt the rules of procedure.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the rules of procedure for 2015. Is there any discussion on any changes or additions to the rules of procedure?
Other than changing dates, is there any, any other changes?
I think it only dealt with the days, the, Gary, the November meeting.
Right.
And the June meeting.
But basically, all change was the dates.
Any more questions? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Rules have been adopted. Next item on the agenda is the meeting calendar for 2015. I have a motion to approve the meeting calendar.
I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting calendars presented.
Do I have a second?
Take it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the meeting calendar, meeting calendar for 2015. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the With County Board of Supervisors' budget calendar for 2015. I hope everybody's looked over it. Mr. Dalton, is there anything?
There's a revision from the one that you adopted in December. The December version says revision one. We're moving the BOS to discuss the budget parameters and goals from right after the board meetings that we have, since you have a joint meeting with the school board that afternoon till the next day at whatever time y'all feel you can get back, which would be a Wednesday. That's the only change on this, but we came into a conflict because on the 27th, we have the presentation and demonstration for voting machines, the joint meeting with the school board in the afternoon to talk about their budget. And we just, I felt that that would just, we'd be so tired by the time we got back, but discussion of the budget needed a little bit fresher. So, that date can change any day you'd like or any time. That was the suggestion on this revision, the 28th.
Does any board member have any problem with the 28th, coming back on the 28th, on Wednesday?
I'd rather just done it the 27th, but I can be here.
We'll make it work.
Any other comments?
Well, you can do it in the late in the afternoon after bus or whatever you want to do. Whatever time, it makes no difference.
We can go ahead and set a time now, too.
Yes.
I said it for whatever, I mean.
What time do you get back in? 5:00?
In the evening? Yeah, I mean, I could be here by 5:00.
Does anybody have a problem at 5:00? Okay, we'll meet at 5:00 that day.
I mean, if y'all want to do it earlier in the day, I mean, that's fine, we can do it. I'll, I'll just have to take the day off from the bus, that ain't no big deal.
5:00 is okay to me.
Works better for me. I mean, I just, my biggest problem was, I'm getting, well, I'm getting ready to start calving and missing days after days not checking on cattle.
And the one thing I would request is that Martha sends us out to it, so that we won't forget.
Martha, will you get this straight? Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the budget calendar for 2015, the revised budget calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The calendar is adopted. Mr. Dalton, is there anything else under other, under our business?
If I'm, if you'll allow me, I think I laid up next to Mr. Hale's desk a resolution. I had a telephone call from delegate Campbell's office this afternoon. While we have discussed it, and we've written a letter concerning the asking for legislation on the cigarette tax. At 4:45 or so, I prepared this short resolution that I'm not quite sure has the proper language in it for consideration tonight, so that we can get that to delegate Campbell's office for the introduction of the legislation tomorrow when they start business.
Can we approve, vote on or approve this and give you the leeway to clean it up a little bit in the morning before you send it?
Yes, sir.
I'll read the resolution. With County Resolution 2015-1. Whereas each budget year, it is the duty of the With County Board of Supervisors to pass a balanced budget for the next fiscal year, and whereas the With County is recognized for its sound fiscal management while maintaining a reasonable tax structure, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has begun the process of developing its budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has determined a need to increase local revenue to meet the demands from school construction and maintenance of existing facilities, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has determined that the ability to implement a tax on cigarettes is a means to expand the tax base and will only be paid by those that choose to buy cigarettes. And resolved by the With County Board of Supervisors that the request be made, Mr. Jeff Camel of the Virginia House of Delegates to introduce such legislation, and resolved by the With County Board of Supervisors to the General Assembly, to, to the General Assembly to pass the introduced legislation that adds With County to the localities that are allowed to implement a cigarette tax. And resolve further that the With County Board of Supervisors shall transmit copies of this resolution to State Senator Bill Carrico, State Senator Ralph Smith, and House of Delegates Representative Jeff Camel requesting that Mr. Camel introduce the legislation, and that Senator Carrico and Senator Smith support the proposed legislation, adopted this 13th day of January 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 2015-1.
But is that with the understanding that Mr. Dalton can?
Yeah, if it's needed, it sounds like me, it says what it needs to say.
I already got it marked up, there's a bunch of language here.
Yeah, there's a, there's a who that should take the place of that, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the source standing here.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to pass the Resolution 2015-1. Any more comments or?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
If I could. It, it says that we'd be added to the, to the localities that are allowed to implement a cigarette tax. Are there other counties that implement a cigarette tax, or is it just cities?
Two counties have authorized previously under the Code of Virginia to Arlington and...
Fairfax.
Fairfax.
Okay, so it's, it's not without precedence?
It's not, we're just being added to that short section.
Right.
And a matter of fact, there's some additional counties asking for this same legislation this year to be added.
Mr. Campbell's office asked for this?
He did.
For?
He wanted official action. We've discussed it and discussed it. Actually made a presentation at legislative meeting, and I'd written a letter, but Martha researched the minutes for me, and we can't find anything that we, the board took official action to request.
Do we know, or have any idea how Senators Carrico and Smith feel?
Then I talked to Senator Carrico about it in runoff, and he was...
Are they supporting?
Yes, he's supporting. I hadn't talked to Senator Smith about it yet.
The last question I have... Wait, wait, no, Gary, let's clarify that. Okay. In honesty, when we had our meeting...
In honesty, when we had our meeting with the elected officials, the dinner that you weren't able to attend, Senator Smith's hired guy.
Yes.
Said he would never be part because it was a tax, it was a tax. But it's, it's something that meets my goals and I hope all, I think all of our goals is that we find other revenue streams so we don't have to raise property tax or real estate tax. This is, is a fair tax, it's an option tax, you can pay it or not pay it by making a purchase. And it will really help collect taxes from a lot of transient folks that we're paying a lot of services for. So hopefully we get Senator Smith to see it that way.
Well, and I guess when I, I may have used the wrong wording when I asked if, if we knew if they were in favor of it, I, I guess the big thing, I mean, they know about this, this is not a surprise.
They do know about it.
Okay. The last question that I have is, is there a, is it like, like meals taxes or is, is there a ceiling?
There is.
Okay.
You can only add a local tax to equal what the state cigarette tax is.
And I don't know what that is.
Five cents or what the state taxes.
Yeah.
That's what the code says.
Is that what the other two counties do that, that are allowed to do this that you know?
I would charge as max, I think it's 35 cents or whatever it is.
Okay.
I'd read in Southwest Times that Pulaski County is asking for 25 cents, I believe.
And that would, they had an estimate of how much money it would help them with their budget and if their estimate was good, ours will be a lot better because we've got more exposure on the interstate than they have. We've got more businesses along the interstate than they have.
Well, I, I agree, I mean, this is, you know, regressive taxes bother me, but this is not a regressive tax because this is a, basically a fair tax in the fact that if you don't want to pay it, you don't buy the, you don't buy the cigarettes. So I, I mean, I, I'm in favor. Good. In favor of this.
Any other comments? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote on With County Resolution 2015 dash one. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Resolution passes unanimously. Okay.
See, Joe, we've already started out a green.
I'm right here.
Okay, new business, Mr. Dalton, fiscal year 15 appropriations.
You have before you the second, third and fourth quarter appropriations for the current fiscal year. We request that those be appropriate as presented.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you'll make that motion.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, and a second to approve the 20, I mean, the 15 appropriations. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Move on to, the Joint Industrial Development Authority Audit. Mr. Dalton?
You have before you the audit that was presented to us. Appears to be order in order and the board just needs to accept it. If you've got any questions, Mr. Manley's with us tonight, he can answer this.
Anybody have any questions about the audit? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion to accept the audit.
I'll make a motion, we accept the audit.
Have a second.
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second to accept the audit. Now, is there any questions? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Item two revolving loan fund. Mr. Dalton?
Uh, Mr. Manley had presented the revolving loan fund to us at their Economic Development Committee meeting. You have, I think, a copy of that brochure in the board package. It's a good brochure, a great program. He reported that they're having all kinds of people interested in it. I would suggest if any of you have people in your district that are looking to start up business or expand locally, this is a great source and actually this money can be used to leverage other money. So I think it's a great program. They reinstated this and I think it changed it enough that people will actually encourage them to use it instead of discouraging them from using it as it has been in the past. So that's a very positive opportunity for citizens of the county at very favorable rates, I might say.
How do we go about publicizing availability of that to folks?
I think we've got the radio here and David maybe can do a press release and do some things out there. And he's got a very nice truffle that we can print and get out around the county.
Am I correct, I've seen it on social media already out there? And to the bankers, too, is it going to?
So if you've got any other suggestions, Joe, I think we're more agreeable to do it all, get this program working.
Well, the thought process that I had is that and, and the other recent announcement about, or about the enterprise zone, that maybe we make some availability to civic clubs out in the county. There's, there are very few people that my age that are on social media by choice. But I think that we need to get out to some of the civic clubs like Kiwanis and Leuken and make a, a presentation. They're always looking for speakers and I think it's a good, good time for somebody to go forth and tell the folks that the county is doing some things right and that we are not sitting here on our hands, that these programs are to help develop economic development and help stimulate business in the, in the county. So I'd like to see some idea how we can move forward with that.
Well, I know that, Mr. Manley, you're, you're scheduled to come and speak to us at the Kiwanis, when?
Uh, first of April, I believe.
Okay, so Kiwanis has scheduled Mr. Manley to come in and talk about the JIDA.
David, if that one goes well, why don't you can it and use it in other places?
I've already got one worked up.
Okay.
Any more comments before we move on?
Are you talking the way I'm doing?
Moving on along with the agenda is appointments for 2015. I've looked at the, the board as far as the committees that we're on and I'd like to appoint each of you to the same committees. And if you have a, if you want off of a committee or, or would like to serve on another committee, let me know and we'll try to make them changes happen. Mr. Dalton, what committees do we need to, do we need to take up any tonight before the, the next meeting or?
Well, it appears that the JPSA has a meeting before our next board meeting, so I think the way I read this, there's three of those people, their terms expired at the end of August, are in for DC. I wish, I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Let me see if I can.
Pardon me for that slip of the tongue. It's Mr. Horne, Mr. McRoberts and.
Mr. Reeves.
Mr. Reeves.
I entertain a motion to reappoint them three board members back to the PSA.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Horne, Mr. Reeves and Mr. McRoberts back to the PSA. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
And the A Corridor has a meeting on the, next Thursday, the 21st, I believe it is.
I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Dalton to represent us on the Virginia A Corridor.
Mr. Reeves is alternate. And you have to start going.
I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor is appoint Mr. Dalton and me as the alternate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Has, all the board members, have y'all talked to the Tourism and Judiciary Committee? Have y'all talked to y'all's representatives?
I have.
I have. I haven't. Are they all up this year?
They're annual appointments.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Didn't realize that.
David Higby, we put on there when you left.
I honestly don't know.
I don't think we did, David.
I think we did.
Uh, that meeting, their meeting is the first Wednesday or Thursday of the month, so you can, you've got time until the next board meeting for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on appointments, can I bring up something about appointments?
Yes.
Let, let's make a definitive decision what we're going to do about the Virginia First or the not Virginia First, the, the one that Coy and I serve on that we've never been to. I went one time, it was a total waste of time. We don't pay our dues, so let's get off that thing.
I've written a letter asking that they provide us the details and.
How we can quit.
Well, we basically quit, but asking how you officially get out. They have to vote on that. My understanding is they're going to vote positively if they've just got other issues.
Maybe I can go to one more meeting if they want us to leave.
Well, please do so.
There's your soundbite. There's your soundbite.
We have the Airport Commission and I've had one person that called to me and it showed interest in the Airport Commission and that's Annie B. Crockett-Stark. Trying to think, um, if we had any others in the, in that package of people that's submitted.
I don't know that we have specifically for that. Um, I'm, I'll look it up right now. Betty Rosenbaum has put, she would, would serve on that.
Is that the only ones out of that bunch?
Yes, Betty Rosenbaum. She had multiple ones, but that was one of the ones.
That's our two, as far as I know, nobody. Has anybody else had any body requests to be appointed to the Airport Commission? Well, I'll entertain a motion on them two individuals, either which one y'all prefer.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Annie B. Crockett-Stark.
Have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, appoint Annie B. Crockett-Stark to the Airport Commission. Any other discussion? Here and now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. So Annie B. is so appointed. Mr. Dalton, the Community Policy and Management Team. Is, Mr. Willis, you're on that?
By code, those are the people that have to be on there.
Okay.
So it says the sheriff or his ex-in-the DSS or his designee. All those names are, Ken Miller is retired, so it's the juvenile person or his designee. Billy Rice represents the children's home. Steve Willis represents the Board of Supervisors and I represent the board. Mr. Baer is alternate and anybody else on the board is an alternate.
So we need, well, Sheriff King, they need to be changed to Sheriff Dunnigan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next one down is the 911 Committee. That's you, Mr. Dalton, Hale and James and the sheriff.
Actually, we can take that one off because we now have an agreement with the two towns that designate the representatives by agreement. It's the town manager, the police chief of each town, the sheriff and the county administrator.
Okay.
So those are by designation of agreement. We can remove the 911 Committee from our list.
Economic Development Committee will stay the same. Leadership Council, Mr. Horne. Fire and Rescue Committee will stay the same. Insurance Committee. Mr. Dalton, does that committee need to be the?
It basically needs to be the same because we asked one of the constitutional officers, Sam, the superintendent of schools, DSS director, Martha has been our employee person and myself is representing the county and I think Mr. Hausman is from the Board of Supervisors. If I put my glasses back on, maybe I can just read those off. But that committee meets annually when we get our renewal in from health insurance and we will be getting that in the next two to three weeks and we'll have our meeting and try to come to some conclusion of how to fund healthcare for next year. But those people have done a good job, I think. Dr. Brandon will rotate off and the next superintendent will come on in June.
Okay, that stays the same. Okay, the liaisons to the clerk of court, commissioner of revenue, Commonwealth Attorney's Office, planning commission, recreation commission, school board, sheriff and treasurer. Y'all want to remain the same for that? Anybody want any changes? Okay, that is.
Just a thrilling bunch, aren't you?
Okay, library board, Mr. Willis.
I'm good with that.
You're good with that? Mount Rogers Mental Health, has that had?
That's a board appointment. Mr. Bean is eligible for reappointment.
We have to reappoint him too, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Bean.
You don't have to. You don't have to, but he's doing a good job. He's got a degree in that kind of field, so...
He serves as the Vice Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Bean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
Before we go away from that, we've had a resignation. Ms. Becky Apsher has resigned this month, or last month, from the board. I'd like to make a suggestion, instead of making that a citizen appointment, do like some of the other localities, have somebody from the Board of Supervisors that has some time and knowledge of that kind, or a staff person, be that representative. Have some input on that big budget out there.
Do I have any volunteers from the board? Joe?
I don't know that I have any expertise to deal with them other than keeping an eye on the budget, but what commission was she on?
It's Mount Rogers Mental Health.
You're implying that I need to be part of the mental health program?
No, I believe the chairman asked you that question. I didn't ask you that question.
No, I don't think so.
I would think if Gary would do it, Gary would...
Yeah, he's worked with them.
Probably got more...
Outfits.
Okay.
I mean, I'd throw you under the bus.
Yeah, no, that's okay. You drive it.
I'm backing up too, so...
All in favor of Dr. Hausman, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the Mountain Community Action Program. I have talked to Ms. Reeves. They've appointed her secretary, and she said she is willing to serve again, so I entertain a motion.
I would make that motion.
I have a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Reeves to the Mountain Community Action Program. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all abstain. Mr. Baer, do you want to continue serving on that?
I would continue to serve at your will unless another board member would love to take that opportunity.
Okay, now I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Baer.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Mr. Willis, you wanted to continue serving on the New River Community Corrections Board?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. New River Highlands Resource, King, and who is that?
Chris King, John Hufford.
Chris King, I'm sorry.
That's Cove King.
Is anybody in the list of people that showed interest in any of that? Yeah, but... I entertain a motion to reappoint them if they're willing to serve another term.
I would make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, New River Regional Jail Authority, I have Sheriff Donegan, and I will be willing to continue serving on that board if I'm...
Actually, that's a big job this year, I understand, is the jail superintendent. He's going to retire in June, so pretty soon they'll be starting a selection process for a new superintendent over there.
Does anybody else like to throw their name and their hat for New River Regional Jail Authority from the board? Hearing none, all in favor of me continuing to serve on the New River Valley Regional Jail Authority, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have Mr. Dalton as the alternate, too. Does everybody agree with that? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the Personnel Committee will stay the same. Offset Debt Collections Hearing Panel, Mr. Dalton, does...
I would just reappoint those people. They haven't had a meeting or a need for a meeting in a long time. Just have to have one in place in case there's a...
All in favor of reappointing Faber, Baker, Steve Lester, and Terry L. Montgomery, and is that Albert Newberry?
Yes, sir.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Tourism, Smith with Airport Commission, we've done that one. Tourism Committee Appointments, we can do that at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Town and County Committee, Mr. Horne, Hausman, Hall, and Willis, y'all willing to continue serving on them committees?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. A Corridor has been done. Wild of Honor Committee, Mr. Hall, you willing to continue serving on that?
Yes.
Okay. And how about Mr. Rup, Wayne Rup? Do we have anybody else on that list? How long has he been on the committee?
I know he's very involved in that project, so I'm sure he would be willing to...
I would, he's the principal funder of that group. That would be a good reason.
That's good enough reason, keep him.
Okay, I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Hall, Mr. Rup to the Wild of Honor Committee.
I'd make that motion, sorry.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Water Waste Water Committee, Horne, Hausman, and McRoberts, that will stay the same. Okay, that takes care of appointments. Next item on the agenda is May Apple Lane, Mr. Dalton.
I put a memorandum to the Board of Supervisors. As we went through this May Apple Lane, VDOT has informed us that a portion of May Apple Lane is not part of the state system, even though they have been maintaining it for untold years, and the state maintenance sign ends it back at the road a quarter mile from where he says that they have a document that says they maintain it. I did talk to him. There is a section of code under No Cost Rule Edition that we can do that. If the board so requests, I've included a copy of the original section, 1968 of May Apple, but it only took it back, I think, a quarter of a mile. So to get everybody, get the rest of the road into the system and legal, I'd ask that the board request VDOT and take action on this memorandum, and ask them to take it in as a, and prepare the proper paperwork to do that for a resolution at the next board meeting. And part of the package, you can see the old plat that was developed and entered into the record book. I think the name of it, it was the Mary S. Tyler subdivision.
Okay, I have a motion.
So may.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Dalton. Does that carry it on back there in front of that McPeek Estate to Phillips Farm Line?
No, sir. This takes it to the state maintenance sign.
Where it is now.
Where it is now.
Okay.
If you want it further, that's up to y'all, but that's the measurement, takes it to the state maintenance sign.
We got time to talk about that in a minute?
Yeah.
That's sort of a gray area there. Not gray, but it's a mess. Do we agree that the subdivision plat goes to the Phillips Farm Line, the way it's shown now?
Yes, sir.
So why not get this off the plate once and for all? If it's a no cost, just take it to the Phillips Farm Line, where our plat says it goes to anyway. Then we're done with it, hopefully.
I would ask that, we ask VDOT to see if that is a no cost. I know the way I approach that currently is we take it to the sign.
Yep.
And he said that'd be no cost, so let's ask that question to VDOT if that's okay.
It's no cost if they don't do anything.
That's right.
Okay. Do that real well.
Wouldn't be a change.
I'd just like to clean that thing up with May Apple, and that ought to be the end of it, as far as what the right of way says.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Or did we vote?
We voted to accept the memorandum.
Okay.
Joe was adding some stuff that Mr. Dalton's got to find out about.
Yeah. Okay, moving right along. Building and Grounds Committee report.
We met, and the main topic of business was hearing a report on the courthouse roof, and it's not done. And the other thing was to appropriate money for a heat pump. The decision was made to not continue to buy parts for that when it's been in service 17 or 18 years, to go ahead and replace the heat pump.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the Building and Grounds Committee to amend and appropriate $6,696 dollars to replace a VHAC unit at the County Administration Building. Come from committee, doesn't need a second, any discussion?
May I add that we had an estimate for that amount. We've actually gathered prices now, and the price is around $5,300. So we can, instead of this amount, just make it $5,300.
Okay, come amend the amount to 50, to amend and appropriate the amount of $5,300 to replace the VHAC unit at the County Administration Building. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We did discuss in the building ground, we did discuss the sheriff that delivered my building down there. So it ain't that we forgot him, we're just getting there.
Okay. I know Sam and him's done a good job as after reorganization and running calls, and as far as I know, they don't have any rollovers or anything else. Everything's working pretty smooth. Moving on with reports, Economic Development Committee report.
Economic Development Committee recommends approval of the attached VITA contract for the upgrades to the Digital Ortho, and to amend and appropriate $5,463.
Come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any other?
Yes, sir, if I may.
Yes.
That's an incorrect amount. It actually needs to be $13,731. Half of that will be paid upon, according to the contract, once the flights in this fiscal year and half will be in next, but the total cost is $13,731. I did the memo wrong. If you go to the next page, if you add the two numbers in the column, it will come to $13,731. I apologize for that error.
Okay, we have a correction on the amend and appropriate, $13,731, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Is any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay, next item on the agenda is State Reduction in Aid to Localities, Mr. Dalton.
Well, it is what it is. Hate to say it that way, but as you know, every time the state of Virginia gets in a pinch, they start taking money away. This time it's $82,531. They calculated the reductions. I sent in over Christmas time that we just agreed with their elections of how they calculated. There's not much you can do about it. I don't know that there's anything you can do about it. The alternative you had was to write them a check for $82,531. How this reduction will take place the last quarter or the last month of the year, they will reduce your reimbursement by the amounts shown. Currently, without any discussions among the Budget Committee or department heads, this is for you to think about, but there's not been any reduction in the local departments' budgets, nor any correspondence to them of these people affected of how or if there's a means to save these dollars. So it will be discussed at our next budget committee meeting, which is next Tuesday, I guess it is.
Next Thursday at four?
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday. Yeah, Waters Committee is next Tuesday. But, you know, you can talk about it. As you see, they don't give very much to the Electoral Board, or the Red Star, or Sam's office, or anybody else's of these departments. And quite frankly, the biggest hit on this one is the CSA over at DSS, so $48,320. And there's a good probability that we can save the money in that department, but I just don't know that there's any opportunities in any of these other departments without affecting people. And y'all's stance in the past is we're not going to affect your employees.
Okay.
But we will discuss these in detail at the budget meeting next week.
Okay, moving right along. Mr. Dalton, you have any other thing to bring before the board tonight?
No, just an update that we're meeting with the State Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. The representative Thursday talked about the mixed beverage corridor. The maps are in the back of what we're presenting. Talk about the mixed beverage corridor. The maps are in the back of what we're presenting. So hopefully that will turn out well. We've got a lot of things going on, as y'all know. Things seem to be going smoothly. I'll say that, and they'll follow up tomorrow.
Okay. Does any board member have anything to bring up in front of the board at this time?
Yeah, I do. In reviewing the board package, did you look at the realignment of the Airport Commission? What area does Pennington represent? Who appoints him?
Smith County.
This might be totally inappropriate, but if it is, smack hands. With them having a contract with him, what is rules about him being chairman?
Or even serving on the board?
I think we need to write a letter and ask.
He's writing a poor profit business out there on airport property and gets elected chairman of the board?
Well, I think our stance has to be that we have a joint meeting that we're supposed to set up in January, February with Smith County, the Town of Marion, and Town of Whiffle. I assume that you will be there at that joint meeting because we're only going to have two board members and the staffs and the Airport Commission. I think those are questions we need to ask Smith County at that meeting. It seems a conflict from afar, from up. I don't think we'd do it that way. And it seems to be a conflict if you have a contract and you're the guy that's negotiating the contract. It seems to be a conflict.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, hearing none, I'll close this meeting adjourned.